...meetings, especially around specific issues where different people can come together to find out information and also talk about issues in a way that might be slightly less formal than a city council meeting.
Okay, Carolyn?
Um, no, I will not participate in signing the pledge to amend. I believe in capitalism and the rights to make profits. I own a successful corporation. Does that make me a gritty opportunist? I'm working to pay my bills, care for my children, and I take care of my family. I'm a human being with the same obstacles to overcome as everyone else in this room. I'm an everyday person, not a one percenter simply because I'm connected with a corporation. I'd like to know how many one percenters are actually present in our community. All businesses are trying to make the most we can without taking advantage of our consumers. I support the big box stores as I support jobs and want to see our local economy soar. Capitalism and free enterprise works, and capitalism benefits our local economy. I see no reason to restrict it.
Okay, John?
So, the presence of money in our national, in our state politics has gotten way out of hand, and it is getting worse all the time. Having to spend a hundred million dollars to win a U.S. senate seat is obscene, and even at the state legislature, there are people spending close to a million dollars to get elected to the state legislature. So, something needs to be done, and I do not agree with the Supreme Court ruling that money is free speech. However, I won't sign your petition because of the rhetoric that you have in it. You've got it targeted to the one percent and the evil corporations, when it should be targeted to everybody. And that includes nonprofit groups who use little tricks to get around the present rules. It should be targeted to the unions, and it should be fair and across the board. So, you know, you're making a mistake with your rhetoric. I think there's a lot of conservatives that would buy in on this if you made it a more fair and impartial wording of your amendment.
Jeanne?
Well, I believe that people are people, not corporations, and that Citizens United was one of the worst Supreme Court rulings in our history. Unfortunately, it's also going to take a Supreme Court ruling of two-thirds to overturn this. The idea is we need to get big money out of our elections. I'm concerned that I wouldn't sign anything unless it... Because at this point, I'm at the... Our city council is a nonpartisan position. We're talking about something that is at the national level. We would have to get a two-thirds vote from the Supreme Court. The city of Eureka has already changed their campaign rules and minimized limited campaign donations to five hundred dollars per contribution, per person, per year. This is Eureka's way of trying to remove the dark money from our local elections. I'm proud of that. I'd stick by that.
Natalie?
Well, I've already signed the pledge, and this summer I agreed to not take corporate donations in my campaign, and I've stayed true to that agreement. As far as how to ensure that our democracy works for everyday people, I think there've been some great ideas floated here. The youth council is something that our Eureka City Council just decided to move forward with as a way of engaging youth and understanding local issues, and then participating in council meetings as advocates for issues that affect youth in our community. And we have had a lot of public forums in the last few years, but I support continuing and expanding those public forums so people can really learn in depth about an issue and then help guide the decisions that are made. I also would like to host coffee talks with folks in the community, and I've been having such amazing conversations going door to door, and somebody said, "Why don't you do it all the time?" And I guess my answer would be that I work and serve the city council, so it's hard to do, but I think I want to make the commitment to going and having these kind of neighborhood level meetings with people as a way to reach all of the folks in a neighborhood. And since we have such an active neighborhood watch program, a lot of the neighborhood watch captains have said I'd agree to distribute something to the folks in my neighborhood so that they would know about the community meeting. I also strongly support the commitment to the code of fair of campaign practices that was signed by all Eureka candidates, stating that no candidate or their supporters will result to unethical practices. This includes attacks on the physical characteristics or families of candidates, seriously falsified information, and other unethical behavior that's not related to the issues at hand.
Okay, Anthony?
It would be fantastic to take the money out of politics. You know what? I'd take this step farther. I don't know if we have any NASCAR fans here, but wouldn't it be great if every single politician had to wear a label for all the companies that gave them money, or a label for all the prominent business owners, or whoever that put money in their bank account? That would be cool. Of course, it's not the world we live in. Money's in politics because a lot's at stake. You're getting that impression listening to this debate today. And oddly enough, our community has already taken care of this. At the county level, the cap is fifteen hundred dollars per person or business. At the local level, here in Eureka, super local, five hundred dollars is the limit. So, we've already got the caps in place, and it wasn't a group like Move to Amend that did. I believe it was Supervisor Rex Bowden when he was on the city council. He actually put that in place. A lot of people, maybe on my side of the aisle, might not have been happy with him, but his intention was right on. Keep the money out of politics, or at least keep it limited how much a certain person can give. Again, going door to door, I am as transparent with you as I can be, and there is no way that this Move to Amend petition will mean diddly squat at the national level because the Supreme Court's already ruled on it. So, I don't want our city council, again, wasting time on this stuff. It's an important issue, but our county, our community, our city have already solved the problem with these money caps. I mean, what do you want to do? You want to make it a limit of two hundred dollars per person? I'll do that if you want. I don't care. But the point of the matter is, it's a problem that's not a problem locally because we've already settled it, so I just can't really get worked up about it. I really can't. And I'm not trying to be disingenuous with that. Take it a step further. Be careful what, like John said, be careful what you wish for, because what if you get this passed, nonprofits would all come under the microscope? We have so many good nonprofits. I don't want any of them to get federal audits because we passed some kind of a rule in contradiction of the Supreme Court decided, and that would absolutely happen. You would be opening the floodgates to that. So, I say no to this move to amend, not because I don't want money. You get the idea.
Haley?
Okay, um, yes, I believe we should take big money out of our elections, and actions speak louder than words. My T-shirt would be completely blank. I don't take campaign donations and am completely self-funded. I previously set aside money to fund my campaign. I'm using shoe leather by going door to door and just to meet my voters. I've been telling anyone that wants to donate to my campaign to give money to at-risk youth services such as the Raven Project or Casa, and so far, that has actually been successful, and I'm really proud of that. Elected officials should be there to serve the public, not serve special interests of those who cut large chests. So, thank you.
Okay, so our next question comes from the NAACP, and that's Jim Glover.
Good evening. The NAACP would like to ask, what specific experience do you have in addressing systemic racism? And based on your experience, what specific initiatives and actions will you develop to address systemic racism in Eureka and Humboldt County?
First answer is Carol.
I honestly, I don't believe systemic racism exists unless you're looking for it. I am both black and Japanese and was not raised to be a victim. I've always seen myself as an equal. I want to be an advocate for helping anybody that wants to succeed, no matter their ethnicity, minority, or majority. I've had racial slurs hurled at me because I was with a white man in Arcata. I felt the gentleman that just had to say something just because it had to come out of his mouth was just ignorant. I didn't find that to be a racist incident for me. I didn't find myself to have to tell someone about it. I don't, I didn't find systemic racism to be the problem, and I didn't think all white people, you know, all that, all white people thought the same thing. So, I believe it is, it is in pockets. It is what someone wants to believe, whether you're white, black, Asian, Mexican, it doesn't matter. That is a person prerogative to think the way they're going to think. We're all prejudiced in some way, and there is no getting around it. Racism will always be around. It's how we deal with the comments and actions that sets us apart from being strong or being a victim. I'm not successful because I'm a minority. I'm successful because I work hard and will continue to work hard.
Can I remind the audience again to hold your comments? Mr. John?
So, I myself have not been a victim of racism or sexism, which I hold equally despicable, but over the years, I have seen it affect other people, both in my social life, in my work life, and even in my family life. It's not to be tolerated in a decent society. It will not be tolerated anywhere around me, and if I'm elected to the city council, I'll make sure that any instances or reports of racism or sexism are fully investigated and stopped immediately.
So, I prefer to call it systematic discrimination. I have a good understanding of systematic racism. As a senior, I'm currently disabled. It's not just about the color of your skin. People look at you different when you're in a wheelchair or a cane. Ageism took me by surprise when I have a master's degree and a marketing degree, and yet I can't get anyone to hire me because I'm too old supposedly, right? My entire family is Jewish, and I'm proud to be a first American, first generation American. I learned about being different when I was a young girl in grade school, and I had kids come up to me and feel my head and feel my tail, or feel my butt. And I had no idea what that meant. I was just probably in second grade, and at that time, they were looking for my tail and my horns. That's how I learned about being different. My beloved son in sixth grade asked a little girl to go to the sixth grade dance. She came back the very next day and said she couldn't go to that dance with him because her father said my son was nothing but a dirty Jew. It impacted my child. In junior high, my son was referred to as the stench of burning bodies from the ovens of the Holocaust. It impacted my son, and he learned it was safer not to share his heritage. Zero tolerance and hatred and bigotry are my stepping stones.
Alan?
So, racialized inequities remain a key factor in determining life outcomes for people, even controlling for every other factor: income, education level, disability, et cetera. Race significantly impacts life expectancy. So, my experience in my nonprofit role, I've worked over many years to improve resources for and access to language interpretation and translation in Humboldt County, and worked on issues that affect people's health in their communities, including with tribal communities. On the council, Kim Bergel and I led the effort to return the city-owned portion of Tulawat to the Wiat tribe, a decision that was unanimously made at the council and was reconfirmed within the past year, and it's still moving forward. I've attended extensive trainings with the government alliance on race and equity over the past two years, working with a cohort of people to examine structures in our community and cities at the county level, within nonprofit organizations, and educational institutions. And I've pushed for the city to prioritize its first-ever diversity plan this year, which will guide both internal operations and how we interface with and support our community.
Anthony?
Obviously, this is by far the most serious question we're being asked, and for good reason. Systemic racism does in fact exist, and I think in Humboldt County, it probably maybe takes place, again, like Jeanne alluded to, in terms of discrimination, not hiring somebody, perhaps. So, I am, I will make a pledge, like I hope all the other candidates do, that we will take anything like this seriously, and it's horrible. I mean, it should not be tolerated in today's age. With all the information at our fingertips, you can learn about any culture. You can just do a Google search and learn about any culture. In our history, and even today, we still as a people have to deal with racism. It has no place. Obviously, I would never tolerate it for any of my employees. I don't go for it. You have my word on that, and I'll take it one step further. If I get elected, I plan to have a good relationship with the Human Rights Committee. They do a lot of good work. I'm a big fan of them, and it's work that should continue. I could go on, but I just feel strongly about that.
Haley?
Yeah, so, I feel that I'm not the right person to talk about the full damage of systemic racism as I am white, however, I will speak out about my observation of it. I have been to over ten different countries and have worked in South Africa and Mozambique last summer. In my time there, I learned that 10% of the white people, or of white people there own 90% of the land. That is systemic racism. We don't face it on such a huge level here in Humboldt County, however, I can tell you that discrimination still happens. I am not a person of color, but I am a woman who's been discriminated against time after time here. I was told by a previous boss that a young lady does not belong on the field. By law, it is not legal for an employer to discriminate for factors of color, gender, or age, and yet this still happens to many people we know in our community. I've been asked to drop out of the city council race because I'm too young. This is unacceptable to me. On a state level, I'd like to see change. Right now, it's illegal to record someone without their consent, which makes it hard to prove that racist or sexist comments were made to you in the workplace. I'd really like to see that changed because only 11 states currently have that. I would also encourage people in our community to be loving to all those traveling and migrating to this area. And lastly, I'd like to say that I am also in support of the city council giving back tribal land near Woodley Island. I think that is a huge deal, and I do support that, so thank you.
Leslie?
I think that all communities should be concerned about systemic racism. In my past, I have volunteered with First Nations, people who are protecting their land. I have attended workshops and read books and essays about feminism, racism, and privilege. For me, it's always been important to be proactive in seeking education and participation around these issues. I have, in my performance space, held a series of community conversations on race, class, and privilege. I've created many performances that specifically address ideas of otherness, ability, disability, the way people are put outside of society. I founded a group, Societies for Poetic Action, that specifically does environmental and social justice work. One of our projects was a whole project specifically about women of color who are also activists for environmental issues, such as Berda Casares. I've worked with and supported sanctuary initiatives. Let's see, I've attended events in support of Josiah Lawson, Justice for Josiah. I've written poetry and donated synapses use for prison awareness art show and performances because, as we know, prison inordinately affects people of color. My platform includes more regular training in racism and equity for city police and staff because I think we've all seen what's happened nationally, and we really don't want that to happen in our own communities. I also think it'd be great to have, or not great, but important, to have a plaque commemorating the Chinese expulsion and the Wiat massacre. If the Wiat people were in agreement with that, and, separate plaques, I should say, and to enter into a formal reconciliation process with the Wiat.
To ask the audience to hold their comments again. Thank you. The next question is going to come from North Coast People's Alliance, and that's from Patty Rhodes.
Hi, I'm with the North Coast People's Alliance, and we'd like to know if you support Proposition 10. 10 includes, which would restore local control to cities and counties to create rent stabilization ordinances. Thank you.
First answer to the, John?
Okay, so I will be voting no for Proposition 10 because it makes it easier for cities and counties to pass rent control measures. Rent control measures are something that sounds good at the beginning, and some people like it for a while. I have experience with rent control in my earlier days when I lived and worked in San Jose and South San Francisco. But what eventually happens is landlords are disincentivized to make repairs and maintenance on their properties because they can't afford to do it when rents are frozen. Other developers and builders are reluctant to build new apartments because they will fall under new rent control measures themselves. Now, two years ago, I did support, I think it was Measure W for the mobile home park rent control, because that was an entirely different matter. Mobile homes are owned by the individuals, and they rent space in the parks. And mobile homes mostly are not mobile. They can't move easily from one spot to another. Also, Measure W had some protections in there for the park owners where they could make improvements, and with the consent of the mobile home owners, they could raise rents to pay for that. But otherwise, I'm opposed to rent control. It's a taking of private property. It makes landlords' properties less valuable and with no compensation from the government.
Okay, Jeanne?
So, while rent, by the way, I'm a renter as well. While rent control sounds great, what we really need is more rental units built in the state and in our city. I'm optimistic that the city of Eureka has created, is changing our zoning laws to increase housing and density in our city. But the idea of rent control and why it doesn't work is because it removes the incentive from contractors and developers to have, to receive a fair return on investment. If that's the case, it is counterproductive to creating more housing because developers and contractors will take their money and go elsewhere with the money to, in order to receive a fair return on investment. I want to tell you something. So, this month, it was a shock to me. This month, my rent went up three hundred and fifty dollars a month. I cried, but at the end of the day, I will get, I live in a great neighborhood. I love my neighbors. And after I was done crying, I acknowledged that my owner has the right for a fair return on investment so that he can continue investing in our community and offering housing. If we take that away from investors, and even small investors, then, you know, that want to buy extra homes or mother-in-law units or anything else like that, it's going to reduce our housing in this community. Just as simple as that.
Natalie?
So, I do support Proposition 10. It's going to go to you, the voters, so you get to make up your own minds about it. But I believe it would allow for the city of Eureka to have local control over this issue and give us more tools should we need them in the future. Because it's so linked to affordable housing, I also want to speak to ways to create more affordable housing. Some of these are to create incentives for the precious few developers who are in our area who build affordable housing projects, to take on construction and management of larger supportive housing and affordable housing complexes. These would include pre-permitting of sites so they're ready to go with few barriers to construction, providing staff with technical assistance in the conceptual stage of the project, and creating a quicker process for LEED-certified buildings, as well as identifying potential partners to help with provision of social services while in advance of projects. And I recently attended a housing forum in Fortuna where developers were invited to speak to what they would like to see from cities to encourage more development from their companies. And those were many of the things they listed, and they said that they want to keep those lines of communication open to decision-makers and to city staff throughout the process so that they can just help problem solve as things come up. Allowing for much more infill development, like second units in backyards or above garages and upper-story additions in commercial districts will also allow for more housing to be built throughout town. The city of Eureka is largely built out, so the zoning code changes that we're going to be looking at, some have already been made, and some more comprehensive zoning code changes are going to be looked at before the end of this council's term. So, I look forward to working on those and making it easier for people to really have control over the properties that they own and allow for a creation of more housing.
Anthony?
So, I'm going to echo a few comments that have already been said. Rent controls, they take the profit out of new housing. There's no way around it. One thing that hasn't been talked about yet, I won't just repeat all that. Again, we have a problem with slums in Eureka. Three of them were boarded up by code enforcement and the Eureka Police's P.O.P. unit, and they were closed for a good reason. There was a lot of drugs and bad stuff going on there. If you pass rent controls, and Prop 10 eventually leads to rent controls, let's just assume that's what you'll get. We have rent controls. You're going to have properties that were good turn really bad, and they will turn into slums because people that own property won't have the money to make improvements. They cannot make structural improvements. They can't improve the integrity of the house that you live in. And let's get this right. Rent controls, if you pass Prop 10, it will affect single homes. Since 1960, Eureka has been a suburban town with lots of suburbs, lots of single-family houses. Those are now going to be targeted if you pass Prop 10. That affects a lot of people in this room. Multifamily housing, forget about it. You will not have any new multifamily housing because there's no profit. This isn't just me trying to rip on something you don't like. This is basic economics. Basic economics, yes? So, the deal is, if you want slums eventually, vote for Prop 10. If you want housing shortages, vote for Prop 10. If you are like me and you care about union jobs, you care about jobs that actually produce a good paycheck? Yes, I do, actually. Then you should not support Prop 10 because we need more housing, not less. Now, I got to tell you something. The infill thing is actually a good idea, except it's not good for the long term. Let's say, I went to the ADU Fair. I learned a little bit. Let's say you find the means to have a separate little dwelling on your property so that you can have a relative or a mother-in-law or something come over. Well, you can't count that as a resident because 30 years from now, you're not going to want a stranger living in some weird little building looking through your window. Let's be smart.
Haley?
All right, so, the basic economics is that Eureka is different than places like San Francisco and should have different rules. And I also want to assure landlords that if this proposition passes, that you will not be forced to charge less for rent than you're asking right now. It's not an overnight change. However, there will be more checks and balances going into the future about your decisions to raise rent of substantial amount on your tenants. I also want to say thank you guys for being here. We only have two or three more questions that I can see has been going on really long. But I want to say that, yes, I do support California Proposition 10, the repeal of Costa Hopkins, and I think that cities should have the abilities to make an impact on rent control. And also, something that wasn't mentioned before, is that it also included a banned vacancy control practice, which also affects our community greatly. So, yeah, that's what I've got to say. Thank you.
Leslie?
Yes, I support Prop 10. Yeah, and just to be clear, Prop 10 does not actually implement rent control. It just removes restrictions on localities deciding what they want to do for rent control if they want to do anything. So, just to be clear about that. You know, affordable rent is considered 30% or less of one's income, which is difficult to find in Humboldt County. I, one of my jobs is I support people who experience disabilities, among other things, and... And it's difficult, it's just difficult for people with limited incomes to find housing. So that's something, I think, to be honest about and know that we want people to be able to find housing. But that's good for them. Rent control does not mean that people can't profit off of housing. It just creates structures around how that profit grows over time. You know, though this area isn't like San Francisco, you know, a lot of people I know moved to Eureka because they could afford it here, and that's a good thing. You know, and I've seen, as an artist, many, many of my friends lose their homes in San Francisco and see the quality of life change tremendously in San Francisco. They can't actually find enough workers for the jobs they have there. And again, this is a different community, but it's good to look at what's happening statewide. And just having stabilized rent means that people have to move less and are better able to contribute to their neighborhood, which I think is a good thing. You know, and people talk about, "I don't know the people on my street." Well, think about if you have people who can stay in their houses, you can know them, and you'll feel, you know, better sense of community on your streets.
Carolyn?
Um, no, I do not support Prop 10. I believe in the owner's ability to make a fair profit. I believe in capitalism, and I am sorry, I have gnats all over the place, but I am really not swatting at myself. I believe in capitalism, as I previously stated. I would love to discuss with the property owners on some kind of program that we could work out to have them offer incentives or subsidies to lower their rental and commercial rental rates. But they would still end up with the same amount of rent at the end of the month. It's just the tenant themselves wouldn't have to bear the burden. So it sounds a lot like, well, you know, might as well have rent control. No, there's, the landlord or the property owner is still receiving their full rental rate. It's just the tenant doesn't have the burden of paying it all on their own. And there's a lot of money to be found to do that. Shoot. On the other hand, I do believe there should be some common sense used to have a property owner not overcharge for their rental property. And that's, a good example is looking at the rent. If it were worth as much as they wanted to rent it for, it would have been rented a long time ago by many places. There's no way to regulate greed, but there's no reason someone can't make a living through renting their properties. But there's just, greed is, it is what it is.
Okay, so our next question comes from the North Coast Environmental Center.
Hi, everybody. Before I ask my question, I want to thank all of you, regardless of your motivations or your political persuasion, for stepping up. It's what makes democracy work, so thank you.
Thank you.
Currently, I'm the Executive Director of the North Coast Environmental Center. In 2008, I was on the City Council, and I helped broker a deal between environmental groups and the City of Eureka to suspend using herbicides at the rate that they were doing at the time. The city agreed to make it a last resort. And since that time, it's been about a decade now, the city has lived up to that. But recently, the city lifted out on the waterfront and neglected the invasive species and actually did the exact wrong thing with backhoes and heavy equipment and exacerbated the problem. Now the city's threatening to go back to using herbicides again as the first resort. So I wonder what your position is on that.
Jeanne?
So I'm proud that one of the reasons I moved here is I absolutely value our rich natural resources, our bay, our wildlife. I'm a photographer. I appreciate all our shorebirds. So I would generally support any kind of herbicide, especially next to our bay. But I would also like to be able to speak with the city, find out and get more information, find out what made the city come to this decision. I'd like to know what kind of herbicide they intend to use, why they decided to change their decision. I'd also want to know what the half-life of that herbicide is. So I would, I'm opposed to that, but I think that some of that had to do with, I don't, I shouldn't say what I suspect, but what I suspect is the police department went there and wanted to keep some of that ground covering low to reduce transients living on the bay. But overall, I care about our environment and I want to protect it. I would need to know more information from the city to make a final conclusion on that.
Natalie?
Great, thank you. Well, I didn't know this was happening until I received this question. So it's a great opportunity for communication between the city and the N.E.C. and other groups. I'd like to learn more about the specifics. But I generally don't support the application of herbicides particularly adjacent to water sources. Your bay is important to fish and to oysters, and it's a big part of our economic livelihood as well as our strength economically and environmentally. I generally don't support those applications, but I will say if we're talking about highly invasive plant species that don't respond to any other form of treatment, like Japanese knotweed, which is one of the most invasive plants in the world, and it's only been proven to respond to glyphosate treatment. And I think the impacts of allowing it to go hog wild are more significant ecologically in some ways than isolated treatment. Then I would support the use of an herbicide in that kind of condition. So I'd really need to know more about the specifics. I do have a background for more than 13 years in stormwater management and, you know, water quality protection. So that's something I take really seriously. And in general, one of the key messages I want to get across is to reach out to the city, our staff, and council members when there are issues like this that arise. There's hundreds of possible issues that come up, and so many times we hear about them. Once it's sort of escalated to the point where there's fewer options for us, and there's not as much of an opportunity for communication. So I appreciate you bringing this forward, and that's the kind of thing that I think we want to continue to hear about and work on just as they come up. So thank you.
Anthony?
Larry, thank you for the question. I feel like if I was on City Council, I could solve this with one phone call. Absolutely no. No toxins, nothing toxic near the bay. The bay is one of the best things Humboldt County has, one of the best things Eureka has. I cannot imagine you ever supporting toxic herbicide on the bay. I just don't see it. And there's a lot of other things I don't support by the bay either. We have to get control of our needle liver. We have to get control of the meth and heroin epidemic. And we have to reduce the number of criminal drug addicts so that we keep all kinds of toxins out of the bay.
Haley?
Yeah, so I would have to say that I'm against the use of toxic chemicals like this in our environment. I would like for this to be banned and continuation. This could affect our food supply. The chemicals would get into our bay, affecting the fish and the other plants, oysters, things like that. The use of chemicals should not be taken, the use of toxic chemicals should not be taken lightly. And we should look into other ways to maintain the area around the bay first.
Leslie?
No, I do not support the use of herbicides along the bay. The only restriction I could find of potential threats was invasive cordgrass, which can be removed effectively with weed whacking and mowing, which was the policy that Eureka adopted. So I think it's a great opportunity to do that. It seems like since there was a 10-year period where herbicides were not used, we could use that information to continue another 10 years and another 10 years from there to find out what worked. You know, Humboldt Bay is one of the most pristine bays along California, and, you know, things like herbicides could potentially threaten the aquaculture such as the oyster farms. And I think, you know, removing plants and things with mechanical means could also be an opportunity for employment with such projects as Eureka's uplift program or different things that seek to provide employment for people.
Carolyn?
This question is a little difficult for me to answer because I don't have a lot of information. There are a lot of herbicides that have come along that are not toxic, and nowhere in here does say that it's going to be a toxic herbicide. But there are a lot of green herbicides to use, and it makes it really hard to say what side of the fence I'm on depending on what it is that you're trying, what it is the city is trying to kill off and what it is that they're using. So without a little bit more information, I can't, I can't just, I can't be on either side of the fence. I'm right in the middle. I just, I don't have enough information to give a valid argument one way or the other. I just, it would all depend on the validity of the use of the herbicides. I'm an advocate for environmental responsibility until it affects the livelihoods of Ward 1 and Eureka City residents. So with that being said, I would just need more information to be able to have an honest opinion about this.
John?
Well, Larry, it's no secret that you and I have disagreed on occasion in the past. But when you did this 10 years ago, I supported you then, and I support you now. And the first I ever heard of them reconsidering this was this question from the North Coast People's Alliance for this forum tonight. And I just got it Friday night. And that alarms me. Why aren't, why isn't the public aware of what the city staff is thinking of doing? Now, one of my platforms in my campaign is we need more communication and openness between the City Council, the city administration, and the public. Well, tonight I find out that the City Council didn't know that this was going on. So maybe I should add another platform to my campaign that we need to have more communication between city staff and city council. So I'm alarmed to hear that they're even considering this.
So as the moderator, I'll be asking the final question for the sponsors of the event. There have recently been a host of claims and news stories related to public health issues that have been based on misinformation and subjective opinions. If elected, you will be responsible for creating and upholding public policy. How will you ensure that your policies are rooted in facts and data? And how will you respond to news stories or community claims that are based on faulty logic, emotion, or propaganda? And the first person to answer this question would be Natalie.
So I know a lot of times people just want us to stick to the policies and not really talk about our feelings. But I do want to say one thing about how I feel on this issue. There's a lot of gaslighting going on, and if people aren't familiar with that term, it's saying that one group is doing something and then doing the exact same thing. It obscures truth. It causes people a lot of confusion, and it's a classic abusive technique. And having been in an abusive relationship and gotten out of it, it sort of makes me go on robot. Experiencing that and hearing just flagrant misinformation kind of makes me shut down and just look at it almost like in a very methodical way. And I think people have been frustrated with my lack of emotional concern over this issue, and that's really where it comes from. So I've looked at the public health data, and I will continue to do so. I will look for common ground and opportunities to support best practices that are consistent. And I believe it's critically important for leaders to stay calm and rational, especially when big issues come up. And I've had, I guess, the benefit of being able to stay somewhat robotic about this issue, but it's partly just an inability to deal with some of the egregious stuff that's going on while still trying to make policy issues for the City of Eureka that are based on fact and can actually move us forward. So I believe in fact-checking, and I've been doing that on my own about a lot of issues that have come forward. And I won't get sucked into hysteria, and I'll stick to what's in our wheelhouse as the Eureka City Council. And this issue really highlights the incredible need for mental health resources, as evidenced by people's rage-fueled attacks that are the very definition of mental instability.
Anthony?
So, big question. There are think tanks on every side of any debate. There are so many think tanks out there. And it's not even that one's right and one's wrong, just different perspectives. I think as you're running for public office, one thing I've learned is how many really good people want to meet with you who are experts in this or that field. And along the way, I take those meetings because I learn something every single time. And I think there's a great value, I'm sure Natalie has these connections too. There's experts on your rolodex. And if you need to know more about, for example, the needle exchange, or you need to know more about Food For People or some nonprofit, there's somebody you can call. You have a friend here and there that can fill you in. So it's obviously wise to not give in to public hysteria. You can't do that. And I think, I said this at the Realtors Debate, there's only four or five real core issues I'm running on. I want to share with you my public policy voting process. It's very simple. If something comes up that I'm not already on the record as being passionate about, and there's going to be a lot of things that we have to discuss. Number one, what is the majority opinion? And it's not just about putting your finger in the air. What's the majority opinion? You have to get a true sense. You have to make phone calls to people that are experts in their respective fields. Number two, does the majority opinion on this particular public policy process, does it step on any minority group, whether it be a group of neighbors somewhere or whether it be a nonprofit, does it inhibit anybody's, any minority's rights? If the answer is yes, we should probably vote no on it, or we should probably at least look at it very critically. That's number two. And number three, is the public policy decision in line with the general plan update? That's my one, two, three. That's my way of being fair. That's my pledge to be fair. I'm not just going to randomly make decisions. I'm not going to listen to somebody who's heated in the moment. I'm going to actually take my time, call experts, have rational discussion, and be the most transparent with you that I can possibly be because I'm easy to find, easy to talk to. I appreciate you guys tonight, taking the time to listen, so late on a Sunday night.
Haley?
Well, I have seen this many times in our community, especially in regards to our needle exchange program. And what I did to find out who was telling the truth and what information was being made up was I did some footwork, and I did the research firsthand and in person. Some news is fake and some is not, but the only way to get to the bottom of it is to show up and verify for yourself. So that's what I do, and that's what I want to continue to do, being a member of this community or possibly being on City Council. Thank you.
Leslie?
It's definitely concerned me over the last year or two how much misinformation can be conveyed around a variety of different issues. And the unfortunate thing about that is then people are often making decisions around things that scare them or things that just aren't true and being taken for facts. And it's, we're at a loss if we can't create policies based on, you know, medical studies on things that people have found to work. I've already spoken up at meetings about misinformation that's been conveyed on a variety of issues, the needle exchange among them. I've also participated in events that reduce stigma around issues so that people can actually talk about the issues with less fear. But it is very penetrating, I have to say. And I think it's unfortunate how many people, and maybe even people in this very audience, are afraid of things and have given information that feed those fears. And I think there's a lot of room to actually talk about issues and learn from things. One thing I would like to see is for Eureka to develop, we have a lot of different commissions, but a public health commission that's really based on people finding and communicating facts around issues so that we can all be better informed. I also think we can create more literature with information about health-related issues, or the commission itself could do this. And again, having maybe some opportunities that are outside of City Hall meetings where we can also address specific issues such as Town Hall meetings. Feel free to get in touch with me, leslafeyoureica.com. Thank you for all, everyone, for being here and for putting on the event.
Carolyn?
I am intelligent, and I'm a very staunch... I am intelligent, and I'm a very staunch researcher. I believe in research. You can't do enough. I'm a pit bull when it comes to an issue. I'm going to find out, find out to the gnats and what is, and I have gnats, I'm sorry, but I'm going to find out what's going on and relay the truth. I don't believe in statistics as a whole because numbers can be manipulated. I will take them into consideration, but I don't rely solely on just the numbers. For 10 years, I was the go-to for answers on every eligibility issue at D H H S. No matter the program, foster care, cow works, food stamps, Medi-Cal, you name it, I was the go-to. I will read every report, I will ask the right questions. When it comes to numbers, I will get, I will get the answer to my questions, and I will respond by pushing back on faulty logic, emotion, or propaganda. I don't believe in letting a story run with obvious holes and questions. I also believe in our society to do my absolute best not to let propaganda be spread. I'm going to chew my own horn and say I am really good at researching and strongly believe in my results. I trust myself to have the right information to make a decision, and I trust myself to refute false information and give it to the public accordingly.
Okay, John?
So, it's my accounting background, my auditing background that makes me go and when a news issue comes up that I'm not familiar with, that I listen to both sides, I do some research, I love Google, I use it every day, and I talk to people who agree with me, I talk with people who disagree with me, and I get the facts. And then I form my decision based on logic and data. And as far as the other people that spread rumors or whatever, there's two different kinds that are being spread. One of those is what's being said in the open, and, you know, those are hard to respond to unless the news media wants to interview me on something. And then there's the kinds that are being whispered about behind the scenes that I hear about secondhand. Now, I can only control what I say, I can't control what other people say, and what I say will be based always on logic and fact and the data that supports it.
Jeanie?
Thank you. I have been active in front of City Council, as Natalie might attest to, for many years. And one of my favorite sayings is "based on, based on results." Based on results, we have had a huge needle litter problem. I would say at one point, Eureka was hemorrhaging in needles, which is biohazardous waste. And because I care about the environment, Larry, somewhere back there, I want you to know that needles are not biodegradable. I was impacted when I went to the bay and saw a seagull bobbing up and down with a needle with a cap on it. We've had reports that needles are washing up on Woodley Island. That can't happen. And so, whatever needle exchange we have, what I say to you is that it has to factor in our entire community. There has to be no harm, do no harm. I have been in front of City Council asking them to do something. I recently asked, I'm really proud that our council came to the table and created an independent syringe advisory group which includes two community members, and in 90 days, they will come back and report to council. I look forward to hearing what their findings are. I too, I'm a marketer, as I said, I love marketing research, I love fact because information is power in which we can make intelligent decisions. So, until I receive all the facts and hear what the independent council, the independent syringe group has to say, I'd like to, and I'd also like to represent one of the fabulous things from this whole process. Door to door.
All right, so thank you. So, we've come to the end of our event here. I just want to thank the candidates for being with us tonight. I would like to thank the audience too. You guys saved, you know, time out of your busy schedules to be here, this is really important. And I also want to thank the sponsors for arranging the event, so everyone have a good night.[1761.73][1761.73][applause]